Hello, welcome. It is 5:01 PM on Monday, June 9th, 2025. This is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. President R, myself, President Bumpus, Director Barnes, Director Campbell. We have Director Etzorn, Superintendent Sean Woodward, Student Reps, Sophia Willett and Myron Robinson, District Leadership Team, School District Staff, as well as members of the community. Director Whitfield will not be in attendance with us this evening. Members of the public can log into their regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda that is found on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are so happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters. There have been previous discussions on these on these issues either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Any form submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting. Okay, moving on to Agenda. 1.05 Approval of the Agenda is your Emotion.
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the Agenda dated June 9, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion, a second, that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the Agenda dated June 9, 2025. All in favor, raise your hand. The Agenda Item has passed 4 to 0. Moving on to Agenda Item 2.01, Recognition of Senior Student Representative. Yay, we have Sophia. Thank you. Okay. Oh, there it is. Okay, sorry, got a lot of stuff going on here. I thought I was in trouble at first, seeing all of those faces out there, but really glad I'm not. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 2.01. We have Recognition of Senior Student Representative, and we have Sophia Willett, who has served two years. We'd like to take a moment to recognize your senior student representative for her last two years of service to the school board. Sophia, as you graduate and take your next steps, and for you, it's college, you're going to UW-Bowthel. I'm a kook, but I celebrate you. We're just so excited for the many ways you will continue to make a difference in the world. You have helped keep us connected to the students that we serve, and we are so grateful for that. On behalf of the entire board, district leadership and our community, thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service, your voice and your leadership. We wish you all the best and send you off with gratitude and big congratulations. You will be so missed. Thank you, Sophia. Okay, this is from the board.
I just want to say thank you. I really enjoyed being on the board. I learned a ton from you guys, and I'm glad that I met all you guys. I don't think I would have ever if I wasn't on the board. And I just learned a lot. I learned a lot of valuable things. And thank you. I'm excited to move on. But I'm happy that I got this experience. So thank you a lot for allowing student reps, because I think it's a really important thing, that we have like students having voice.
Thank you, Sophia. Okay, Agenda Item 2.02, Introduction of Our New Student Representative.
So as we, as we close out one chapter and say goodbye to a beloved school board rep, we are now congratulating and entering a new chapter. We want to introduce our new junior student representative to the school board. After receiving nine applications and conducting interviews, the board selected Rena Shaw-Woldman from Sky Valley Education Center. Rena, would you stand up? We are so very excited to have you share your voice and perspective on behalf of students across this district. I'm incredibly excited to see what you will do. You are a go-getter, someone who never settles, and I think you're really going to bring a lot of good things to this board. So congratulations.
It's always great to recognize students. So thank you both for being here, representing all students in them in our school district. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 2.03. We have Staff Recognition, Employees of the Month for May. The Monroe School District Honor Roll Recognition Program is aimed at recognizing employees for exemplifying our core values through their service to our students, staff, families and community. Congratulations to the 34 exceptional staff members nominated in April for their outstanding service to our students, families and community. Let's celebrate their dedication and hard work. Please join us in congratulating our May Employees of the Month.
All right, for our Classified Employee of the Month, we have Susan Brun. Did you happen to be here, Susan? Okay. Susan is a paraeducator at Park Place Middle School. And the core value Susan has exemplified, student-centered. While Mrs. Brun demonstrates excellence in all core values, she demonstrates super high marks in building connections with our students. I enjoy watching her interact and laugh with our students while our work is a serious, is a serious high-values-and-high-stakes endeavor, certified and classified alike. It is amazing to see Suzie's relationship-building skills at work when she is seeking ways to help our students feel like they belong and that they can achieve excellence here at Park Place Middle School. Thank you, Suzie. All right. And for our Certificated Employee of the Month, we have Monica Brown. Monica, do you happen to be here? All right, if you can please stand up. Monica is a teacher at Salem Woods Elementary. Core value exemplified is equity and student-centered. I would like to nominate Monica for outstanding work in rolling out and refining inclusionary practices over the past two years. Her dedication to student-centered support has been truly impactful. Monica has not only embraced inclusive education, but has also honed her craft to ensure that services are more effective, personalized, rigorous and empowering for the students she serves. This year, she has taken her commitment a step further, collaborating with colleagues to ensure that every student has what they need to thrive. Her proactive communication, thoughtful planning and compassionate approach have made her a vital part of our educational community. Monica exemplifies what it means to lead with both heart and skill. Monica has been at the heart of a transformation of how students at Salem Woods receive their IEP services. The school is now utilizing an inclusion model in which students receive support within their gen ed classroom whenever possible. This was a massive undertaking, a one that took time, energy and then unwavering belief in the success of all students. Thank you, Monica.
And I have the honor of congratulating our Substitute Employee of the Month, Tia Simone. Tia, are you here? It was amazing to be able to go and help present this to Tia on Thursday with the superintendent and some other staff members. She's just a phenomenal human being. But here we go, the core value exemplified, integrity, belonging and excellence. Tia is a highly valued and sought-after substitute teacher known for her professionalism, integrity and commitment to student learning. She comes to school every day with a smile on her face. Colleagues praise her strong classroom management, clear communication and ability to maintain continuity in instruction. She consistently creates a positive welcoming environment, builds up strong rapport with students and upholds high academic and behavioral expectations. Tia's presence brings reliability, care and a sense of stability to every classroom. She enters making her an exceptional asset to the school and the district. Tia and Monica and Suzanne, it is because of people like you that choose to call this place home where you work and because of everything that you pour into our students that they are where they are. We couldn't do this without you. You are all truly valued and appreciated. No one does it alone. We all do it together, and you're all a valuable part of this team. So for that, we thank you.
Hey. Agenda Item 2.04, Retirement Recognition. Tonight, we will be taking time to recognize another special group of individuals here tonight. Please join me in a warm welcome for our staff members who are retiring this year. It said on there, pause for applause. So I went ahead and started that for us. All right, we have 27 educators, administrators and support staff who have collectively dedicated over 600 years to serving our students and district. Woo, all right, thank you. The impact you've made, you've each made on the lives of our students, our staff, families and community is truly immeasurable. It's, it is measurable though, in 600 years, it is. We are incredibly grateful for your service and wish you all the very best in your well-deserved retirement. It does say pause for applause. Holly, this is a great, great script. As your name is called, please come forward to receive your certificate and a crystal apple in recognition of your retirement. Gift certificates were generously donated by local businesses for those who are present, including Ixtapa Mexican Restaurant, Toscano's Italian Kitchen, Island Blends Asahi and Poki and El Paraíso Mexican Grill. This sounds delicious. All right, unfortunately, some of those, some of the apples were delayed, and we will get them to you as soon as they arrive. After you receive your certificate, please head out for a group photo. Okay, we're going to start our, start off. There's a long list. Ready? Okay. Diana Aceturo, paraeducator at Frylands. 29 years. Janelle Ackley, bus driver at Transportation, 20 years. Stephen Blanton, lead custodian at Park Place Middle School, 32 years. Mary Burns, paraeducator at Frylands Elementary, 10 years. Patricia Connor, teacher at Park Place Middle School, 26 years. Pamela Duncan, oldsh, teacher at Chain Lake Elementary, 36 years. And David Fairfax, maintenance, six years. Ezra Gavani, a teacher at Sky Valley Education Center, nine years. Linda Hampton, office manager at Leaders in Learning, 26 years. Yeah. Catherine Homan, paraeducator at Frank Wagner Elementary, 23 years. Valerie Jensen, bus driver at Transportation, 30 years. Yeah. Lori Johnson, teacher at Frank Wagner Elementary, 25 years. Paul Ken, bus driver at Transportation, three years. Leslie Nutson, van driver at Transportation, six years. Laura Lundstrom, paraeducator at Transitions Program, 16 years. Catherine McGee, teacher at Frank Wagner Elementary, 36 years. Richard McCutcheon, teacher at Park Place Middle School, 35 years. Maureen O'Brien, teacher at Salem Woods and Chain Lake Elementary Schools, 36 years. Carrie Olson, custodial supervisor, 44 years. William Prince, teacher at Park Place Middle School, 36 years. Sybil Roche-Cob, HR Coordinator at District Administration Office, three years. Lisa Ray, teacher at Monroe High School, 27 years. Karen Rose, teacher at Monroe High School, 36 years. Catherine Salmy, teacher at Frank Wagner Elementary, 18 years. Ronald Simmons, bus driver at Transportation, seven years. Jackie Washburn, paraeducator at Monroe High School, 14 years. And Ken Washburn, bus driver at Transportation, 18 years. Happy retirement, y'all. That's a long time. Thank you for all that you've given. Thank you. And then, yeah, and then we have to, Agenda Item 2.05, Years of Service Recognition up next.
All right, next, we're honored, I just like, it's a celebration night. These are nice nights. We're honored to recognize and celebrate those who've reached significant milestones in their careers within Monroe School District. Each school year represents countless hours of dedication, effort and heart from our educators, administrators and support staff. Your commitment to helping students succeed does not go unnoticed. We are proud to present certificates and pins to commemorate your years of service. Reaching 10 years and beyond is a remarkable accomplishment, and on behalf of the Monroe, of the school board, we extend our deepest appreciation for your continued dedication to our schools, our students and our community. Thank you. Please join me in giving a big round of applause for the outstanding individuals. Go for it, Myron. You got us going. You can't clap too much tonight. As we call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate and pin and then head out to the hall for a group photos as well. Let's begin. 10 years of service. Jose Barrasa, Park Place Middle School. Daniel Brooks, Maintenance. Shara Bustamante, Frylands Elementary. William Carroll, Monroe High School. James Cooper, Maintenance. Mandy Denton, Monroe High School. Ginger Donahue, Chain Lake Elementary. Josie Fitting, Technology. Amy French, Maltby Elementary. Joseph Grugrich, Frylands Elementary. Catherine Heidner, Park Place Middle School. It's a long list too, you guys. All right. Anne Horkey, Sky Valley Education Center. Sarah Coons, Frank Wagner Elementary. Cynthia Lampers, District Administration Office. Audrey Lewis, Chain Lake Elementary. Kayla Luke, District Administration Office. Alicia Muller, Maltby Elementary. Hugo Molina Durante, Frank Wagner Elementary, our principal. Seamus Neary, Sky Valley Education Center. Mary Oldfield, Transportation. Anne, Anne O'Neil, Hidden River Middle School. Sarah Ostler, Frank Wagner Elementary. Karen Overture, Frylands Elementary. Jamie Porter, Maltby Elementary. Stephanie Pratt, Frank Wagner Elementary. Taryn Sands, District Administration Office. Callie Schleikemeyer, Salem Woods Elementary. Heather Sevier, Monroe High School. Jaclyn Shinstrom, Maltby Elementary. Ashley Tuisasopo, Monroe High School. Cynthia Wood, Salem Woods Elementary. Tyler Wood, Monroe High School. And Samantha Zaders, Monroe High School. You guys survived all of COVID with us. Thank you. Thank you for that. All right, moving on to 15 years. If you want to save your hands, we can also do this where we get to the end of each section as well, because there's still a lot more names to go, you guys. Just so you know. Feel free to clap after every name. That's okay too. Receiving 15 years of service, Cassandra Alexander, Maltby Elementary. Patricia Benitez, bus driver. Elizabeth Kloss, in Transportation. Mark Cooper, Potoschnick, Monroe High School. Jose Cuellar Mendez, Maltby Elementary. Wendy Fuller, Frylands Elementary. Nona Goodwin, Sky Valley Education Center. Brenda Hunt, District Administration Office. Sandra Munson, District Administration Office. Tracy Vance, Monroe High School. Kenneth Washburn, Transportation. And Nicholas Wolf, Monroe High School. Let's give the 15-year honorees a hand. All right. We've got some good longevity here. We've got the 20-year group. We've got quite a list. All right, and I do apologize in advance and for the ones, if I butchered your name, I do apologize. I'm doing my best. Janelle Ackley, Transportation. Mike Birch, Transportation. Janelle Buchanan, Sky Valley Education Center. Michelle Dickinson, Monroe High School. Julie Edwards, Frank Wagner Elementary. John Fry, Maintenance. Heather Harrington, Maltby Elementary. Jane Harvey, Park Place, Janie Harvey, Park Place Middle School. Maria Hennessy, Transportation. Kristy Hilson, Park Place Middle School. Catherine Homan, Frank Wagner Elementary. Tyson Horner, Monroe High School. Geraldine Sanders, Sky Valley Education Center. Jill Nelson, Monroe High School. Sarah Perry, Sky Valley Education Center. Rachel Sullivan, Frank Wagner Elementary. Sarah Trainer, Maltby Elementary. Jill Van, Jill Van Mortelli, Monroe High School. Lisa Wallace, Transportation. And Lisa Woodard, Monroe High School. Woo, that's our 20-year group. The list gets a little shorter the longer we go. 25-year honorees. Vicky Arnold, Salem Woods Elementary. Barbara Bonrude, Transportation. Jennifer Coe, Salem Woods Elementary. Patricia Connor, Park Place Elementary, Park Place Middle School. Susan Crager, Monroe High School. Linda Hampton, Leaders in Learning. Colleen Papal, Chain Lake Elementary. Tara Riddle, Salem Woods Elementary. Dawn Squire, Park Place Middle School. Britt Van Horn, Maltby Elementary. Brett Willie, Monroe High School. And those are our 25-year honorees. Thanks for hanging in there, guys. We got two more groups to go. 30-year honorees. Sherri Erickson, District Administration Office. Timothy Langley, Leaders in Learning. And Dwayne Mog, Maltby Elementary. We've got four left to go. This is our last group, 35-year honorees. Pamela Duncan, oldsh, Chain Lake Elementary. Catherine McGee, Frank Wagner Elementary. Maureen O'Brien, Chain Lake and Salem Woods Elementary. And William Prince, Park Place Middle School. Thank you, guys. One big hand, round of applause for everybody. You can now give your hands a break for just a second.
Oh, lots of celebrating today. Okay, Agenda Item 2.05. Celebrate donations now over to our student reps. Consideration of donations.
Good afternoon, everyone that's still here. I'm going to go first because I have a lot to go over. So recently, Bearcat Pride has donated to, wait. Yeah, that's what I'm reading. Okay. Recently, Bearcat Pride has donated $250 to be used for the boys soccer team. They also donated $130 to Nick Wolf to purchase five sets of 24 multi-colored balls for atomic modeling. Grocery Outlet has donated $438 to the Academy of Critical Thinkings. January 1st through the, through April 30th, 2025, SVEC fundraiser. Toscano's Italian Kitchen donated two $100 VIP gift certificates for employee appreciation.
And then, Opriso Mexican Girl Monroe donated six $50 gift card certificates for staff appreciation. Island Blends Asahi and Poki has donated five $50 is each in gift cards for staff appreciation. And then Ixtapa Mexican Restaurant has donated two $50 each in gift cards for staff appreciation.
Okay, and then I'm also.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and moving on to Agenda Item 2.07, we have our student representatives. And now Sophia and Myron will go ahead and highlight some of the activities going on in the Monroe School District.
Okay, sorry, I didn't know that that was two separate things. But I'm, I'm going to start off with the 3A Wesco League honorable mentions. So first, we're starting off with track and field. We have Carl Watson, Seth Wood, Vincent Tessidori, Santiago Franco, Myron Robinson, Michael Humble, Michael Carpenter, Sydney Gardner, Ava Davidson, Katie Thompson and Ella White Rock. That's for track. Next, we're moving to baseball. We have A.J. Welch and Joe and Mike Enrico. Boys Golf, we have Cullen Johnson and Wyatt Prohm. And then for Coach of the Year, we have Brittany Kits, 3A Wesco, all-league track and field. You can stop covering your face over there. And then we also have Corey Hope for 3A Wesco, all-league boy soccer.
And then for the seniors, June 11th, this Wednesday, there will be the senior dinner. And then the next day, June 12th, Thursday, will be the seniors' last day, and all the seniors will check out. First, we'll have, the seniors will visit their elementary schools, and then there will be the senior parade, and they will end that day with a moving up assembly and senior serpentine. And then June 16th will be graduation at the Angels of the Winds Arena.
Any questions for our student reps?
What are you most looking forward to doing this summer?
Um, something that I'm looking forward to the most during the summer. Getting to spend time with my family and, yeah, that's really it. I guess just making memories this summer with the people that I enjoy being around.
I'm really excited to just spend time with family, and I want to hike more. And I'm doing a road trip with my brother to California on the 101, and I'm really excited for that. So, yeah.
Thank you, Myron and Sophia. Okay, we have no public comment. So moving on to Agenda Item 3.01, Monroe High School Physical Education PLC Team. And it looks like we have a presentation. And it looks like we have a presentation.
All right, Jesse, do you have our PowerPoint? Just kidding, just kidding. Well, I'm, I'm super excited for you all to hear from our PE team, Lauren and Brittany. James is not here tonight. He's coaching, so he would, he's at the high school still. But I want to share with you why when Sean and our group started talking about having teams present to the board on our PLC journey, I want to share with you why I wanted these folks to come first for, for our school. We at the high school and all schools in Monroe and everywhere are really shooting for a very worthy outcome of all students learning at high levels succeeding. You know, when I hand them that diploma in a week, we want that to represent that they're prepared for their future. And I think the thing about that outcome that we're all shooting for, it's, we're also doing that in a system that was not designed to produce high results for all students. So we're really trying hard to change that, but it's super challenging. And my own story as a teacher, I was probably a week in to, you know, 25 years ago, realizing that I couldn't do it on my own. I had some really challenging students. And I learned really quickly that it was not possible for me to do this by myself, but I didn't have a team to work in. And a few years later is kind of when I bumped into this PLC work. And I remember thinking like, if we're ever gonna actually achieve this, this is, this is the only route that's gonna get us there because you have people working together and not alone to try to serve our students. And so at the high school, our challenge has been in our PLC journey, we've been quote unquote, doing PLC for 15 years. And what that means is that we have, and this is no judgment of our staff. This is, I feel like more of a leadership problem than anything else. We have our work and then we're over here doing PLC. So it feels like you're doing two things at once. And what I'm trying to get our staff to, to realize is this, this stuff over here is the work. We have to move it from being two things to like, this is, this is our work. This is who we are. We don't do PLC work. It's, it's our identity. It's, it's how we meet the needs of all kids. So I'm really proud of Brittany and her leadership in this team because they're, they're one of the teams who have really embraced that. This is our work. Let's try to do it the right way. Go slow to go fast. And I wanted you to hear what that has meant for them as educators and also for our students. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our team.
First off, I want to thank you guys for having PE tonight. It's a super unique subject that oftentimes feels like it kind of goes by the wayside because it doesn't raise state standards. It doesn't produce numbers. It's not this tangible thing that people look for. And it's hard to be as passionate about health and fitness and just the journey of all kids that the three of us teachers are up there and not really feel like we're necessarily ever going anywhere. And that really changed, like really, really changed this year. And the three of us became, became much better educators because, because of it. James and I have been teaching for over, you know, over a decade now and Lauren is just beginning that journey. So actually, I think it's really cool that she was able to kind of fully immerse herself in this experience this early on in her career. I think that's gonna catapult her into being in, more of an excellent teacher than she already is for her age. So like most of, most of the PLC world, we started by looking at state standards. And I'm not sure how many of you guys have ever looked at Washington State's phys ed standards. They're about as vague as it gets. Not a whole lot of guidance. There's year one, there's year two. It's can you do a motor pattern? Can you do a motor pattern? Okay, cool. Motor patterns. All right. Let's, let's roll with that. So our journey may have looked the same as everybody else's when we got rolling, but it was very, very different because of how vague it was. And it wasn't as straightforward enough for us to say, oh, we need to learn how to use grammar. We need to learn how to analyze a text. Those things are not nearly what we were up against. And we have already had a standard, standard one, which as I just said, is roughly, roughly put, it's, it talks about motor patterns. From complex to simple, doesn't really matter. It totally leaves it open for us and for interpretation. And we, for the last almost decade that James and I have been, that's been the standard that we've PLC'd. If that's what you want to call what we were doing. And when Brett approached us to take this journey, we committed to teach with more intentionality that we've ever taught. So instead of just teaching with passion and wanting people to be fueled by what we love the most, which is health and fitness, we dove in and again, we became more intentional teachers. So we took the two classes that we share as, as a threesome because we all teach slightly individual classes as well, kind of one offs, which again, makes it a little difficult to truly PLC, especially when you're beginning the journey and it's clunky. And we broke it down into motor patterns. We were able to break down the fundamentals of what physical education really is from a very ground zero and allow kids to kind of build up from there, which is really, really crucial nowadays, I think, more than ever because of the lack of movement that's happening with our youth. So we broke down Intro to Fitness and our weights classes. We have a couple of different versions of weights classes, but those are the two classes that we all have in common. And we took skills in those classes and it led us to the development of something that was actually able to track through data. And data was another thing in PE that again, is a bit vague. But because we were doing what we were doing and really committing to this process that our whole staff at the high school is, we were able to actually get data to see what, you know, can this kid throw properly based on a proficiency scale? Can you surf a volleyball properly? Again, very similar, very similar motor patterns. So we were again, going through this building block. Then you looked, you know, at weights. Can you hip hinge? Can you move into a squat with proper form? Can you, you know, three or a four step process of the power clean, all building block? Motor patterns that we find to be fundamental movements that you use later on in life when you're a healthy, happy 30, 40 year old. And, and then we took the data and we rolled with it. That brought us to the amazing realization that we actually were at Core Question 3 and Core Question 4. So what do we do when kids, when kids don't have it? And what do we do when kids do have it? And it was amazing to see how, once we could get to that point, how many we got to that core question number four of how, what do we do with students that, that do have it? And that kind of took over in our teaching so that we didn't have to use intervention time to do stuff like that. We were able, able to in classes, do what we needed to do with some of our toughest kids that really had a hard time at the Core Question 3. And we had peer coaches, peer teachers all across our classrooms in those individual classes, working on throwing, working on the squat, working on the hip hinge, to the point where they were correcting themselves as if they were us. And in the PE world, that is next level learning. That is, when you are able to correct somebody else, you are going to do that movement pattern when you are 40 years old and you're gonna do it well. And that's, that's what's really important to us. And it was this process and starting to move away from the idea that it's not the here and the now. How do we get kids moving right now, today? Although that is crucial because again, the sedentary lifestyle that is youth at this moment. How do we make it so that they find something, they have the skills when they're our age? And when they're doing the things so that they're not having to just restart this health journey over and over and over again? Because that cycle is painful and it's not super successful for people our age. And as far as where we'd like to, you know, move from here is it was clunky. It was, it was a very clunky process. There's not a whole lot of proficiency scales that were created for the PE world. Again, we're super unique in that sense. So we need to clean up the process and now we feel comfortable enough for doing it that we will be able to clean up what we've created and then streamline that to continue moving it into kind of our one off classes. I'm the only one that teaches yoga. I need to go through this process and I need to do it through yoga. So, and you know, we've got cooperative PE. It's a different, unique kind of beast of a class, but we need to go through this process and do it. And so the goal would be next year, now that this feels so much more comfortable to us and we know the success rate, we have the proof, we have the data and we have the cohesiveness as a team to do it. It brought us together as a group so much stronger that then we can attack more standards next year. So the goal would be next year that we're kind of moved. We have two thoughts in mind that it would be standard three and five. Three talks about what style, muscular endurance, muscular strength, cardio, those types of different styles. And how do you apply them to your life later? And then heart, target heart rate and how do you use that? Because inevitably that is fitness. Is, do you understand how to use your heart rate? And, and taking exactly what we did and going through that process all over again at a much, a much faster rate and a lot more comfortable. So again, we are building a better physical education program that hopefully continues to garner respect at the high school so that they can leave us. And again, when they become our age, they're, they're able to do the things that I know we all want them to do. And we were probably all wished we had when we were in high school at this level. That is our PLC journey. Lauren, do you have anything to add to that? That was, and I'm long-winded and I totally admit that. Do you guys have any questions about kind of how this, how this worked for us at the high school that I didn't say?
Not a question, just a comment. Having known you from long ago, I couldn't think of a more perfect person to head this up and to, to do what it is that you're doing and to pour into kids something that we're both so passionate about and has brought us so far in life. So I'm just super excited that you're here, that you continue to pour into our students and do all of the things that you're doing because you make a difference every single day that you're up there. So I appreciate you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Director Burns.
Also a comment. I had a student, well, my son was in these classes and he actually is a pretty experienced athlete already and still learned so much in this process and grew and it actually helped him in his sport as well. And he enjoyed it so much that he has signed up for next year as well. So.
I love it.
You got to keep him as long as you can. We appreciate you and thank you so much for presenting. I'm so excited, Lauren, that you're also part of that team. Yeah, I, I, I mean, that's a pretty impressive team, just the three that I know and see. So that's really exciting that you are all leading that work and what that means for our students up there.
Awesome. Thank you, President Bumpus.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for your presentation and congratulations, 3A Coach. I had to, I had to, Brittany. Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 3.02, the Budget Extension Hearing for the 2425 year. I will read aloud the public hearing protocol for the 2425 Budget Extension Hearing. Okay. Welcome to the Monroe School District Board of Directors Public Hearing for the 2425 Budget Hearing Extension. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for you, the Monroe community, to share your input on the budget extension for the 2425 school year. Chief Financial Officer Brenda Hunt will present the Budget Extension Hearing this evening. Board directors will then have time to ask questions about the budget extension. And then community members will be invited to share their input through public comment. After this evening's public hearing, the board will consider the adoption of the 2425 Budget Extension Resolution seen on tonight's agenda as Business Item 4.01. To help guide the proceedings of this Budget Extension Hearing, we ask that, one, all speakers complete one of the, one of the public comment forums which are available on the back table. Please fill out the form and bring it forward to the board. Two, speakers will be called upon in the order the forms are received. Three, each speaker will be permitted to speak for up to five minutes. Four, each speaker's public comment should be focused on the budget extension. If speakers get off topic, I will remind them to refocus their comments on the budget extension. Five, speakers desiring more time to present their input to the board are encouraged to submit written statements. Any information sent to the superintendent or an individual board member will be copied and shared with all board members. Six, speakers should not be overly repetitive, particularly if a prior speaker has already addressed a subject at great length. Seven, speakers should not make any derogatory or inflammatory comments directed toward any individual. Eight, it is important to the board that all community members have an equal opportunity to be heard and that they are not intimidated by others and differing views. All comments are important this evening and should be listened to with respect. Again, thank you for being here this evening. I would like to introduce Brenda Hunt, our Chief Financial Officer, who will be conducting the Budget Extension Hearing this evening.
Thank you. Happy to be here. Not a celebration. We're not. I always. Yeah, no, no applauding. Anyway, important work that we're doing. So. There we go. So our budget extension, I wanted to explain why we are here. The public hearings are held for proposed budget extensions as required by law. Form F200, which is also attached to the board agenda, is OSPI's Required Reporting Structure for Officially Requesting and Filing the Budget Extension at the state level. And the board resolution, as Director Bumpus mentioned, the board resolution for adoption of the budget extension will be proposed during the business portion of today's business meeting. The board resolution is legally required format for the budget extension at the local school board level. The purpose of the resolution is to increase the total budget appropriation, which is the total dollar amount that the district is allowed to spend during the fiscal year. And this budget extension is for the 2425 year. Through this resolution, the board is requesting an increase in our 2425 budget appropriation of $878,947. And the expenditures are adjusted for increased expenditures related to legal services, safety costs and expenditures related to increased student enrollment and student needs. So in the general fund, what's changed? What do we know now that we didn't know a year ago when we adopted the budget? We anticipate that our revenues will be approximately $1,308,714 more than our original budget. And we see down below that we have a decrease in local non-tax, increase in state general purpose, which is our apportionment, an increase in state special purpose and an increase in federal special purpose. Those are broken out in our capacity. When we built the budget a year ago, we built in $3 million in revenue and expenditures for those unknown revenues that we didn't know about a year ago. And we built those into our expenditures as well. So for beginning this budget extension, I took out the capacity that hadn't already been dispersed. So that 1.4 million that we saw in local, that was all capacity that I built into the original budget that I removed. I took out $600,000 from state special purpose. That's our categorical programs. And I took out $305,265 at the federal special level. Those are federal grants. So I removed the capacity. Next, our state general purpose. This is our enrollment. Our enrollment is approximately 187 FTE more than what we had anticipated a year ago. And so the enrollment drives all the funding in all the demographic groups. That means it touches our BEA, which is our basic ed, both our traditional buildings and our alternative learning experience buildings. It, it impacts special education. It impacts our CTE and it impacts our transitional bilingual, et cetera. So all of those programs, because we have more kids, all of those other ones are impacted as well. So it impacts all the funding. So we have an increase of $1,863,816 more in apportionment. Okay. Next is our state special purpose. Those are categorical programs. Those are like our transportation, our special education, transitional bilingual, transition to kindergarten, highly capable and food service. Those were increased based on our student enrollment and our student demographics. Now, on the prior screen, you saw that as 722,853 because I took out the 600,000 of capacity. But the revenue increase itself was 1.3 million. And next is our federal special purpose. And all I did with the federal grants is align them. And all I did with the federal grants is align them. A year ago, when we did the budget, we were basing our federal grant allocations on assumptions. And so this just aligned our federal grants with what our actual allocation is this year. And so that was 427,310. So if you add up all of these numbers, you get back to that 878,000 that we are increasing our, or the 1.3 million that we're increasing our revenue. Any questions on our revenue? Our expenditures, our expenditures are, like I said earlier, adjusted to for our anticipated increase in our legal services, our safety costs, our expenditures related to increase enrollment and student needs. So in our, I'm gonna just go, our net budget increase of 878,947. We have, I've got two screens going here, so my screens aren't, there we go. First is capacity. I did the same thing in expenditures that I did in revenue. And I took out capacity. And so capacity is 100% budgeted in other instructional purposes. And I took out that 2,844 because at this point, we kind of know what we're going to spend our money on for this year. Next, our support services. These are expenditures added in district-wide support, food service and transportation. That's an increase of 699,122. Of that 699,122, later on the consent agenda is the settlement. $275,000 is, is built into the budget for the settlement. And that is approximately $13,470 for each of our 20 plaintiffs. Next is our compensatory education. Those are the categorical and federal programs. We increased our expenditures there by 276,891. And again, those were adjustments to our grants based on the increases of revenue and the assumption that we'll spend what revenue we have. Next are the regular special education and CT instructional expenditure capacity. And again, we're adding that for instructional purposes and student needs based on our increased enrollment and, and costs. Any, any questions on the expenditures? Guys are quiet tonight. So the impact on fund balance. The first column here is the original 2425 budget. We had anticipated having 11,990,000 dollars as a beginning fund balance. We had projected to spend slightly more than 108 million to receive a slightly more than 108 million dollars in revenue and spend slight, almost 110 million. And we had anticipated on having 1.9 million dollar deficit or coming out of fund balance. And we anticipated based on that, that we would have 10,080,631,000 in our fund balance at the end of the year, which is 9.33% of our projected revenues. With this budget extension, we are planning on having about 9.4 million dollars in fund balance, which is 8.65 of our projected revenues. So that's the change in our fund balance. Our revenues are now less than our expenditures by 1.47 million dollars. Any questions on that?
No, I do.
Yeah.
We're gonna get to the end. Well, almost the end. So this, I know, I understand. So we, and we approve this, we recognize that entering into this fiscal year, we were looking at running a deficit model. But every single year, we are curving that deficit a little bit less. One, thank you, Brenda, for your attention to detail on this because there are other school districts in our region that have nothing in their fund balance. They are upside down and they are in chaos right now. And I'm thankful that we're sitting here looking at this kind of a fund balance. And a number is a number, but the percentage of our budget and above what our minimum fund balance requirement is, knowing we've had to run this deficit model, so they curve that to be back on matching the budget. I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but knowing that we've had to run a little bit of a deficit and a little bit more than what we had budgeted, looking into the next school year, are, do you think that we will be able to actually not have to run a deficit model? That we'll be back on track of saying we can have the revenues matching or exceeding our expenditures?
We are, we, meaning Sean and I, have had conversations regarding next year's budget. As you know, legislative, legislation took a really long time and OSPI is just now getting the tools to us to, to dive deeper into that program. But we're having conversations and our hope is to balance the budget for next year. We are not far along, far along enough to be able to give specific details.
Okay. No, I, I understand. That's why I don't want to put the cart before the horse because we got to finish this before we get to that. But that trajectory, looking at every single year that we are getting closer and closer to running that because fortunately, we've had the, the fund balance to be able to do that as we slowly make those transitions. But this is also part of the conversation of why we're looking at, this isn't why, but it's a piece of some of the different major changes that we've made in our district this year. And that is trying to basically, for lack of better words, plug the holes in the bottom of the bucket. So we would make sure that we have enough water to run it, but I want to make sure that we're also keeping that ahead of the game because we can only do that for so long.
Yeah, I still believe that fund balance may only be spent once. And so I think that, that our conversations will continue. As you know, July 10th is the deadline to have a draft budget. And historically, the draft budget is typically the budget that we present in August. So I still have a few more weeks.
Okay.
To get that.
Thank you.
Done. Any other questions? Thank you, Jeremiah. Well, that is the end. My focus was to make it concise, but make it short.
Okay, are there any public comments regarding the 2425 budget extension hearing? Can we have one?
Hey, hello. My name is Heather Young. I have a recent graduate and a student at the high school. Uh, and Brendan knew I was going to ask about this. We talked before the meeting. In reading the auditor's report, it showed that in 2023, the district was served with 61 tort claims about SVEC. And it sounds like in the adjustment to the budget, there is a settlement with 20 of the plaintiffs. Is that correct? Okay, for 275,000. So the rest of the claims are due to go in January. How are we budgeting for, it says here that we are funding our own defense?
Yeah. So the 60-some that the auditor spoke about in the exit conference, several years ago, we had a larger settlement that was funded by risk management.
That was the Bard?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the 195.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the way we're staging the, the remain of plaintiffs, and we haven't had any in over two years, any additional, is that we're aligning those that, with the court dates.
Okay.
And so our goal is to build them in as we know about them coming. Again, it's, it's, we only know what we know today. We only know what the attorneys are telling us. A lot of it is confidential.
Sure.
And so we can only share what we know and what's in this particular budget extension is what we know today.
So aside from the 275 in the extension for the settlement, how much is legal fees anticipated for the rest of this, this budget cycle?
Well, we have an attorney on retainer. And he is keeping the attorney fees relatively low. And his attorney fees, just for him specifically, is watching what's going on. And those are less than 1,000, 2,000 a month. And all of the other legal fees we have are directly related to the, the work that continues at Sky Valley.
Okay. And so when we go into the budget cycle for next fiscal, we'll be baking some in for the anticipated costs as they go to court?
We'll, we'll be building in based on what we know at the time that I'm finishing up on the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Are there any public comments regarding the 24, any other public comments regarding the 2425 budget extension hearing? Are there any public comments, any more public comments regarding the 2425 budget extension hearing? I'm gonna do it one more time. Are there any public comments regarding the 2425 budget extension hearing? Okay, the budget extension hearing is closed. It's the only time I do that. Jeremiah loves that gavel, though. Okay, agenda item 4.01, we have the budget extension resolution 2-2025. Is there a motion? Sorry, motion?
I move to the Monroe School District Board of Directors, approve the budget extension resolution number 2-2025.
Was there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve budget extension resolution number 2-2025. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed 4 to 0. Moving on to agenda item 4.02, energy, management, education, and conservation policy. And this is the first reading. We have Adam Denny here, Director of Facilities, with his own presentation. PowerPoint?
Yep.
Oh, really?
Technically a PowerPoint, yeah.
I was kidding. Pause for applause.
Okay, so. So I don't know how much you guys have heard about like the clean building performance standard, House Bill 1257. It's well-known as the clean building law. Part of that law is we need to have an energy management policy, but I'll quickly go over the law. So four major requirements to be in compliance with it, we have to benchmark the building. So we take all of our square footage, the age of the building, the age of equipment, the usage, occupancy, all the schedules, everything about the building. And then we create a target with that. And then, of course, we have to meet the target. Uh, we have to implement an operations and maintenance program, which that's more of a procedural thing on just how we're going to maintain building set points and equipment and all of that. And then create an energy management plan, which is why I'm here. So just a little bit, compliance deadlines. The high school, we have to be compliant by June of 2026. We are meeting target, uh, so we have to have a year of energy usage showing our compliance with that along with the other items. Uh, other schools are not doing as well, but we have a whole another year for those. So you kind of see the compliance deadlines with that. So I stole this from WASDA. This is all new, or this is all from the WASDA Energy Management Policy. They also included education. I kind of took that out because for my needs, we don't really need the education portion. So the light green is everything that they had in there. The darker green, uh, that's kind of what I adjusted. And I won't read through it because you should have a copy there. And that's it. Any questions?
Yes. When it comes to policy and finances, I typically do. So I just want to understand. So new law, new costs, new policies, new metrics, and new expenses. New state funding?
There are a lot of grants. I haven't been very successful getting them. The hope is anything we have to do, I can at least get some funding. Something I've been talking with Sean and Brenda about, uh, budgeting it for next year. I'm hoping they push, there's discussion of it being pushed out for a whole nother year, the whole, all each of those, benchmark, or all each of those deadlines. So we might have some more time with that. Like I said, the high school's good, so we don't really need to invest there. But some of the other schools, we're, we're definitely talking about some investment. Um, just simply hiring somebody to do some of the compliance side of things, the verification of square footage and things like that.
So they want all 295 districts to get all of the metrics in and get this implemented inside of one school year?
Well, this has been going on for quite a few years now.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the policy has been going around for that. And so do you have a breakdown of an idea of what this will cost our district?
If every building was meeting target, I want to say probably around a couple hundred thousand dollars. The problem is just total, just to get us compliant. From there, I can take it on. I can update our, basically just give them our energy bills. That's really all. But to meet, to get our building energy usage down is going to take investment. I'm hoping with the bond, I'm hoping that we can roll. Well, a lot of that was rolled into the budget requests. It's things that I added with what we're gonna, you know, propose, which will be coming to you guys soon for the bond. If that goes through, then I think I can cover all of what I need to do with that.
Those requests that you're hoping are out of in a, in a future bond, is that, are these one-time expenses or these ongoing?
Yeah, they're one-time expenses. And most of those expenses ultimately will save us energy. So I mean, there's a little balance there. Help us out a little bit. So they are investments.
But it's not, it's not a one-to-one financial net neutral, is it?
No, no way.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So you mentioned there is a, a committee that sets the goals, sets the targets. Is this some formula or is there some like?
Yeah, there's a formula, Energy Star, Department of Commerce, that's kind of their thing. I meet monthly with, we have an energy team, PUD, PSC, and then the Department of Commerce has, uh, they've set up, uh, blanking on what you call them. So it's still water energy. They kind of headed up. It's the clean buildings, some, uh, wow, I do this all the time and I can't remember what it is. I'll have to get, get back to you on the name of it. Um, anyway, so we meet monthly, we go through our buildings, we look at energy usage, we look at our HVAC system, trying to figure out like, why did we use less over the last previous years or why do we use more, like what's working? So we have been working on that monthly.
And then what happens if we miss it? If we, the date comes and we're not at standing?
That's not entirely clear. Um, there will be penalties. I just, I'm not clear on what that actually looks like.
So don't provide us funding for it, but then they penalize us, we don't hit it?
Exactly. Yeah. And I mean, they're.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any more questions for Adam? Adam, that was a great presentation. Thank you. Hey, agenda item 4.03, University of Florida, Florida Literacy Institute Curriculum. And this is the first reading. We have Jennifer Murphy and Christine Hilstad presenting.
All right. Um, so I'm going to really turn it over to the team, but just to say that Christine has just done a fabulous job leading a pilot team to learn about this curricula. And we have two teachers here as well, Bethany Harmon and Lisa Young. Our third teacher was sick today, so Jackie Shinstrom won't be joining us. But I'm going to turn it over to them and then I'll follow up at the end with any questions and go over costs and things.
All right, we are super excited to talk about phonics, uh, because.
Because kind of at the opposite end of those graduating, these are kids that are coming into school and it's really, really important that we give them good foundational skills for being able to learn to read, because we know by the end of third grade, if kids are not reading at grade level, that drastically impacts their opportunities as they go further on in life. So we had a team, twenty teachers that piloted. Super grateful to Sean and Jennifer who approached me about being able to do this. It's the first time I've let a pilot. And just being able to work with the teachers in the different buildings was really truly amazing. So we want to tell you a little bit about what we did and how great this program is. IMC listened to us go on for a really long time. Yeah, so we better get going. So Jesse, if you can click to the next slide for me, that would be awesome. So we always want to start with, you know, centering our stuff around children and our kiddos. So these are some of our local kiddos doing UFLY. There's some progress monitoring going on there. You can see the whiteboard has lots of words that have been written out. So these are from some of our local, local kiddos in the different schools. We piloted all five. Frank Wagner was a little bit ahead of us, had been using it with all their kiddos. And then the other rooms, other schools had been using it in the reading club, like LAP, tier, our tiered interventions. But this pilot was mainly focused on tier one with seventeen classrooms. So go ahead and click the next one. Just a reminder of how it tied into our strategic plan and what we want to do. We want our kids ready for the future and reading is a huge, huge part of that. So we'll, we'll go through a little bit of what we did with the pilot, mainly why this program was needed, what the gaps are in our current curriculum. As we know, we invested a lot of money in training in that. And so we want to let you know kind of why this was needed, how it aligns to the science of reading. We'll give you a little, a little information about that. And then I would love for Lisa and Bethany to be able to share their experience, because I think that is really important for you guys to hear that. And then, yeah, Jennifer will kind of bring it up at the end with kind of costs that we'd be looking at if you approved the adoption of the curriculum. So our current curriculum in four buildings is Fontis and Penel Classroom. And Frank Wagner uses the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project Units of Study, which is also known as Lucy Cockens. They are aligned called Balanced Literacy, which you may have heard about. The approach lacks direct, explicit, and systematic phonics. And phonics is the base. If our kids don't know the sounds, they will at some point start to have words that they cannot figure out, and the gap starts to grow as they get into upper elementary. So what we needed was a foundational phonics program to help build those skills. And our current curriculum does not have that, and it also does not align to the science of reading. The science of reading is like thirty-five to forty years of research about how kids learn to read. We know how they learn how to read. We were not trained in teacher schools how to teach kids how to read this way. So when the teachers share, they'll be able to talk a little bit about their growth as educators and so I look forward to them sharing that. But the science of reading, we'll go into it a little bit of kind of what that is. So if you want to pop to the next one. Let me give you a background on UFLY. So this is the main piece. It's a seventy-dollar manual. Frank Wagner rolled this in their building with mostly this, and it was bare bones, and they saw a huge improvement in their students' ability to read. It is explicit and systematic. It comes out of Florida. Holly Lane was the, the writer of the curriculum. She believed very strongly that it need to be evidence-based. There is not strong evidence supporting parts of Fontis and Penel and Lucy Cockens. So while we're here to focus on this other part, it is the beginning of a reading journey for this district. And, but this is the base. We have to get really good at this. And then we'll continue to look at the other parts and what we need to figure out. So we found UFLY is what we call it. It's called UFLY Foundations, but we just call it UFLY. And it's out of Florida, so I didn't go. It has some good parts to it that we really like, so it targets professional development. So it's not just a curriculum. We train our teachers. And it's called an edutive curriculum, which means the teachers learn as they're teaching the curriculum. It is super impressive. We have learned a ton, a ton, a ton. We've improved our instruction and therefore it has led to improved teacher outcomes and student outcomes. And I want to be able to show you that data in a little bit. It's data from our students here in this district. The effect size for this curriculum, when they piloted at UFLY, was one point four and two point four some, I've never, we've never seen effect sizes that high, meaning that it does what it says if you teaches as, as intended. So it's a very, very strong outcome for kids. I know Bethany can talk a little more about details of this, but I'll keep it short for today. This is the reading rope. And the part we were focusing on was word recognition, which is the bottom part. That includes phonological awareness, decoding, sight recognition. We had a lot of encoding. So decoding is the recognizing the words and being able to say them. Encoding is being able to write the words. The encoding is the application of the decoding. So this is a very common thing to see right now is people are moving away from balanced literacy to the science of reading. It also includes a writing rope that has specific things like that as well. So you'll probably be seeing more about that as we continue to do some work. But UFLY is grounded in the science of reading, focuses on phonemic awareness, decoding, spelling, handwriting, and encoding. It provides clearer sequential instructions, ensuring students master each phonics component. There's forty-four sounds. They need to know all forty-four sounds. We make sure they know the forty-four sounds before we bring them into other things. So you can see if there's gaps, kids don't just go back and learn it unless we fill in the gaps for them. And so, yeah, it's taught structured, it's research and evidence-based. We piloted in all three tiers. So we had special ed, tier two or LAP, reading club intervention, and then tier one. I had the honor of leading the pilot, learning a lot about the curriculum. UFLY has a lot of great resources, but it still takes a team. They trusted me to kind of guide them. They went and taught it, came back and gave feedback, and it went like that. We met probably maybe six times, sometimes for half days. And then Bethany and Jackie, who's not here, and Lisa and a couple other people helped us present to IMC. So pretty proud of the teacher work that happened. And they, yeah, they, I think they enjoyed learning together, coming together for sure. Yeah, so we'll go ahead and go to the next one here. Okay, this is super, makes me super excited. I love data and good spreadsheet. And this is data from a kindergarten class. On the left is December before we taught UFLY. So we did some piloting, training of teachers in October, November, December. We gathered some data before we started teaching. You can see there's a lot of red and green and some yellow. On the left is the indicator. So if the student had an IEP, had LAP, was identified as needing language services. So those are indicators. So about half that class had some support that was needed. And then we taught for eighteen weeks. So this data is fresh as of like last week. And you can just look at the green. Every kid knows, I mean, it's just, it's blowing us away. This is just one classroom, so we're getting all the data in. I will compile it, all twenty classrooms that we have it for. If you want to go to the next slide, Jesse, this one also is, is a shorter period of time. This is ten weeks, and this is a first grade class. And you can see where it went from red to mostly green. And the students that are in the red continue to get differentiated instruction to help them fill in those gaps. If we are able to adopt, here's the impact it would have. It would allow us to have phonics instruction that's research-based across the entire district, all five buildings. That's a lot of kids. It would improve our foundational reading skills that would lead to higher student achievement and academic growth. We are already seeing in our data, in iReady, and the data I just showed you is from something, something called the Core Data Screener, which is what's recommended to use with UFLY. If we move forward, we'd recommend that assessment be used by all teachers three times a year, so we can show the growth. And then it's going to improve teaching practices. That's super important. That's hard to do. And this team jumped in and were very vulnerable and took chances and really proud of them for the work that they did as a team. Okay, it's kind of more of the same, but I think what I would really like to do is to have Lisa and Bethany come up and each share something that was most impactful from the pilot for them. So you got it? You're good? Okay.
Hi, I'm Lisa Young. I teach second grade at Freyland's Elementary, and I've been teaching for quite a long time. So I've had lots of practice doing different things. One of the things I noticed, well, two of my students in particular, when we met for IMC, I was almost close to tears, because I just had tested them and they'd been practicing. But, you know, starting at the kindergarten level, they were very low. And it used to be that we'd struggle with those readers for the whole year, trying to get them up, trying to get them up. But with a systematic approach and the practice that we had, we just, they're reading at the, and the second grade level, and that is really unheard of. If you're that, if you're two years behind when you start in second grade, it's really a tough position to be in. We also, just listening to the PE teachers talk about PLCs. We've been using UFLY to PLC with our whole second grade, and we've brought our Paris and special ed teacher and everybody in it together and looked at our data as a whole. And that was really powerful, too. Being able to see the kids' different levels and who, who was struggling and how to adapt our practice. So with this program, we can, we can see in front of us who's making, who's making growth, who's not making growth. And every week, we can adapt our teaching methods. It's just something that we've never been able to do before. So it's really, it's exciting and evidence-based for sure, because if it didn't work, I wouldn't want to do it. And as soon as I start seeing results in the kids' confidence and how many more kids are reading because of this, it just, you know, I just, I, if, if somebody said no, I wouldn't go back and do it the other way again. I'd find a different, you know, I'd keep doing it this way somehow. So it's really worth, sorry. It's the truth. I mean, I, I, when there's evidence that shows and I see it in the kids, it's a, it's amazing, really. So we had a half, half of our grade level was very lowest class we've had. And I want to, I'm looking at the data, it's over three quarters or on grade level. So that's huge for us. And part of it's, well, it's all because we started teaching in a systematic way, and we've been lacking that for years. So it's really exciting.
Hi, I'm Bethany Harmon, and I've been doing the LAP Reading Intervention Program at Salem Woods for the last ten years. And honestly, we didn't really have an approach that we knew would work for kids. So some kids learn to read, and it's great. And they can pass the state test and they can move on and be successful. But we had a lot of kids that just really aren't learning how to read, and we didn't know what to do. And it turns out, there's a whole bunch of science around what you can do, and there's a super inexpensive curriculum that teaches the building blocks in just like an amazing way. So what we're really excited about is that not just some kids will learn how to read, but like this increases the equity of our instruction across the whole district. Every child will have such a good chance to learn how to read. And then the number of kids that need extra support will shrink, and we'll be able to give them that support so that they can also learn how to read. So that's what I'm most excited about with UFLY is just the chance to help every single child in Monroe be successful. And without, without failing first, like we're just going to get everybody reading right away. And then we can focus on so many more things once kids are being successful with their reading. So we're super excited.
All right. Do you want to have questions for them before I go over the budget stuff, or you want me to go over the costs first?
Yeah, I got a question. So first off, I mean, this is very exciting. Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you. I mean, it's very exciting news. But just kind of to catch me up on the history, how did we get here? How is the standard a non-evidence-based method that hasn't been working for years?
Wow, that's a great question, James, and it's a little bit of a Pandora's Box. We actually bought the Cadillac of what was available about two thousand eighteen, nineteen. And that was being touted as the best reading program out on the market at the time, Fontis and Penel. And then also the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project had years of data to show its effectiveness. What we've learned is that a lot of kids will learn to read in whole language, but not all kids will learn to read. And so what we are trying to do and what we've done this past year is we've had a committee really looking at where are those materials out of line? And what is it that we need to shore up in order to make sure that all of our kids have access? In whole language, not all kids do. And so although we were seeing, I think it's part of why we see sort of the stagnant numbers in our reading growth. And it relied a lot, very heavily on teachers being experts in reading, which at the elementary level, like they talked about, it's not what we were trained to do. We were training components of reading as generalists, but very few actual reading experts. These materials, UFLY actually teaches them how to teach reading, which is very different.
I was going to be more blunt and just say that the whole balanced literacy was a cult, you know? That was kind of the mindset behind it. And it was this great program that really didn't have actual evidence behind it. And so just believe it, and eventually the kid will make it happen. I taught a lot of reading as well, and that came out when I was kind of stepping out of education. And to see kind of a lot of schools bid into that, and you walked away from honestly just good teaching of phonics. And you literally teach kids how words work, how syllables work, and how to put them together. And so I'm super excited to see this. I had a couple of questions about it. I'm, yes, 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 all over the place with this because, yes, it's actually good teaching and good teaching of literacy, and we need to get kids reading. For the kids who have already gone through kindergarten and the kids who are already past third grade, and the kids who are already struggling because they have not had this opportunity, I have a couple of questions. Stretch goals for those kids. What are our estimations on how this will hopefully help them be able to catch up? Do we have any ideas of that? Yes, please. Yes, yes.
So for example, this year, my fourth grade cohort at Salem Woods had probably twenty-five kids that were reading below grade level. And we have been using UFLY as an intervention with them for the last, I think they were in first grade when we started, first or second. So like two, two years of UFLY intervention. This year, we worked them all the way through UFLY until, like their assessment showed, they didn't need it anymore. And going into fifth grade, we have two students that still need phonics instruction. They're both already identified with IEPs and getting specialized support and making progress. So like
They're catching up.
That's, that's just a very personal example. And I, like, I've been talking to Kathy Heidner at Park Place. I'm like, okay, we got to get, we got to get aligned here because it's, I'm very excited about it because also this curriculum is not a baby curriculum. It's like very simple and bare bones so that you could, you could use it to teach adults. It just, it is just the basics, the fundamentals, and it works. So I have very high hopes for students that are already behind.
Thank you. Jennifer, I have a question for you now. For implementation, when we do this, we're talking about all five elementaries, but are we looking at bringing any of this into any intervention work in the middle schools as well for kids that do come out of there?
Yeah, so the initial rollout, we're looking at probably training our K-three teachers. All of our LAP teachers were a part of the pilot. If they weren't a part of it formally, like Bethany, they were a part of it informally. And like we said, we've already started onboarding Kathy Heidner at the, at Park Place to it. But the first initial rollout would be for K-three teachers. And then we would be working with our, like, LAP teachers to look at, okay, so now what does intervention look like? Because once it's at tier one in all schools, it's going to really change the way we apply it. And then intervention setting, and then we will also be looking at, okay, so then what does that mean at the middle level and beyond? It's hard to say long-term what the need would be. I mean, our goal would be if we do it and we do it well, we're going to reduce the number of students moving beyond third grade who don't have the phonics and the foundational skills that they need. But in these next few years, we're going to have some gaps that we're going to have to catch up, and we, we do intend to use it for that. But the primary use would be K-three.
Do we have any, either in the summer or in the school year, training or ready to go for teachers that are going to implement this?
Yeah, so we're looking to roll it out in August. All of the videos, so UFLY is great. Everything is available online. And you can watch the videos at any time. So if a teacher wanted to get started before, they could. But we're planning in August during their August days, we're still in the process of kind of designing what that will look like. What we found through the pilot was that you can't just do a one and done. It's not enough to sit and learn UFLY and read it and plan. It's really a lot about the ongoing conversations. And so Christine and I are going to be working heavily with principals in August to kind of think about, okay, what does that rollout look like? One, one way we're thinking about it is that in those August days, everybody would kind of get the initial boom, the first couple hours, similar to what we did with the pilot. And then principals would need to find time, likely like a collaborative Friday every four to six weeks. I think we talked about where they would then reinforce and then do the next steps. You can't take it in all at once. And so what we learned throughout the course of the twenty weeks on the pilot is that, you know, we kind of had to learn a little bit, go and apply it, try it out, come back, learn some more. And that's what we would like our principals to help our teachers do. And can I say it? Like Bethany is going to Like, Bethany's gonna be our, one of our new TOSs next year, and I'm, we're looking forward to this being an area that she can really pour into.
You almost looked surprised back there. You knew about that, right?
I did.
Okay, good. Just found out just now. All right. You're training everyone in the whole, okay, awesome, thank you. And then, the last question really is, it's somewhat subjective, but I mean, we're gonna have teachers who have a lot of years of balanced literacy burned into them and a lot of PLC data. And so what struggles do you anticipate then? How do you help to turn the tide? Because a lot of teachers have seen that.
I can tell you that, I can explain that one. It won't take, every single person after, our whole staff has just tried it on. We jumped in, um, the year before, like, previous to the pilot, just with the book, and just, we trained ourselves, and we, we agreed as a K2 team that we would just, we would move forward, because we have been, we know that this is a piece that's been missing. We just used to have to make it up, or create it, or find it. I mean, it's not like we saw kids that weren't reading, and I just thought, well, I mean, we would try anything we had. I don't, there's no resistance at all, at all. I mean, everybody, not only are they for it and have put in extra time, our paras have, there's not one person, because alls you have to do is see the proof, there's no convincing of anything. So that's really nice. So I don't anticipate anyone will argue, but I don't know. I think we'll have a few.
Um, for me, it's a lot just about, like, supporting our principals to support their staff. I think the hardest thing, I think the place we're gonna see the most resistance is that schools that have been successful, or in teams where they've seen success. It's really hard to give up something that's been working, but we need to make sure that it's equitable for all of our students. We cannot continue to repeat these islands of excellence. We have a, we have what we believe is a way to teach reading effectively, and we want that in all of our classrooms. And so it, I think those will be the hardest teachers to convince at first, but once I think they see the data and the fun, I mean, kids love it, they talk about it all the time, I think that's gonna really help to kind of turn the tide.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Otherwise, cost is a little misleading, $70 a book, but there's, there's also a lot of prenables that have to go along with it, the decodable passages, the sound wall that will have printed and laminated. We did a lot of testing with the pilot about what materials worked effectively to supplement it. You can do it just with the book, but we believe that in order for it to be implemented as effectively as possible, it needs some supplemental pieces. Those supplemental pieces are things like whiteboards and magnetic letters, and also access to decodable text. Not all of our teachers are gonna be ready for that piece yet, but we want to make sure that we have padded our budget, so that when schools are ready, they can begin to build out their decodable libraries. And so we're looking at probably an initial implementation around $150,000. It's not so much in the manual as it is in the supplemental materials that bring the instruction to life. So that's when you see the cost, that's where it is.
Thanks, all.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item 4.04, Washington State History and Espanol Curriculum.
All right, so we, um, we took a look at, well, first of all, let me say dual language, I don't know if you're all aware, is moving, is expanding. So we've had K, um, K5 for a long time, and this year, we committed, Joy, David and I committed to adding, trying to add a TK, and doing a study to see if we could get TK in dual language, and then also rolling up to seventh grade. Well, whenever you roll up, you need new curriculum. And so in seventh grade here, we do Washington State History, and so all of a sudden, it was like, wow, yeah, we're gonna need Washington State History materials in Spanish for our students. What was submitted to you is, um, Washington State History is called The State We're In, but after the submission, we were reflecting on, how could we do this? That's a way in which our students in dual language have the same access to the same text that our students in monolingual have. And the solution, we really believe is a better solution, is to have our, our texts that we currently have, the parts that are used by our teachers, translated into Spanish. And so, um, that is the proposal, and the good news is, you already approved those English materials. So moving forward, we would just work off of that, and we wouldn't have to come before you to do another read and do any additional approval. But then that way, it's aligning more with the program goals of dual language, which is really getting them in similar texts as their peers, so they have more shared learning experiences. And it helps the teachers collaborate, too.
Any questions? Okay. It's John. Hey, agenda item 4.05, American Reading Company for Dual Language K through 5 Curriculum, and this is the second reading. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the adoption of the American Reading Company for Dual Language K through 5 Curriculum.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the adoption of the American Reading Company for Dual Language K through 5 Curriculum Discussion. Okay. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Agenda item 4.06, Project Lead the Way CTE Robotics Curriculum, this is also the second reading. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the adoption of the Project Lead the Way CTE Robotics Curriculum.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the adoption of the Project Lead of the Project Lead the Way CTE Robotics Curriculum Discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Agenda item 4.07, Schedule of the School Board Meetings for 25-26 School Year, is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the schedule of the school meetings for 2025-2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the schedule of the school board meetings for the 25-26 school year discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Agenda item 5.18, Approval of the Consent Agenda, is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated June 9th, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated June 9th, 2025. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Superintendent Update with Superintendent Ward.
All right, so we're still under an hour for this meeting, so I have, I have, I have some time, right? Oh, yeah, two hours. Yep, I'm, I'm good, I can be over now. The, Christine, I wanted to thank you publicly for running that pilot team. I know it's a big deal, running your own building, and then Jen and I asking you to also facilitate that group. It just speaks to the competence that we have in you, and, and we're super excited to get everyone exposed and using that, that curriculum, so thank you. A couple, just quick things that I have, is we, we wrapped up the final meeting of our Facility Advisory Committee last week, which was awesome. That was our fifth meeting, and there was roughly 25 community members that was, that was on that committee, and, and it was a pretty streamlined, straightforward process, and I think they have a really good proposal for you all. That will be happening at the August workshop, the, the first meeting in August. So, and that will basically just outline the projects they believe that should be prior, prioritized for inclusion in a future bond or levy. So I don't know if you had anything that you wanted to add to that? It was, it was a good group. Yeah, so appreciate, appreciate their commitment to that. Had a really good meeting recently with the leadership team from Evergreen Health Monroe. So they are really wanting to partner with us in the future, and we have a really, a good opportunity, because I explained to them that we have a goal of expanding our industry-recognized certifications available to our students at Monroe High School without having to go to Snow Isle. And obviously, a very high-demand field in the state of Washington is in the healthcare industry. So we haven't selected what we're gonna add to next February's course catalog, but if we end up adding something like a CNA program, which would be pretty, pretty likely, just looking today, there's over 200 job listings in Snohomish County alone for CNA positions. And you need a diploma, you need your certification, you need to be at least 18 years old, and the average salary in this area for CNA is around $40,000 out of the gate. So that's a, yes, absolutely great opportunity for, 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 for young people. One of the cool things, if we do choose that pathway, a lot of hospitals and, or health organizations are wanting, they need nurses as well. So some of our young people that go into that field, get a job, they're getting support with tuition if they commit to working in, in whatever organization is funding that for them. So I was just thrilled, they were, they were really excited af, after the meeting, and that, I think, oh, they, and then they would be able to do all the clinical hours for, for our students as well. So that's a great partnership, and I'll keep you posted on that. And then a couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity, and Chuck came along to present to the Monroe Economic Development Advisory Board, and they asked for me to come and give them an update on our facilities group, because they're looking at, they're planning forward and looking at properties in town and, and those kinds of things. And I think this also came up a few years ago, perhaps, with, with the city as well. So I gave them an update on, on what we were doing, and then, uh, explained that we have a process, and so they're gonna be really watching what y'all decide in, in the coming months as far as a potential bond. I mentioned to them that we are running a feasibility study right now to potentially bring a branch campus or core campus for a skill center here in town. And one of the gentlemen there was really leaning in, of course, they're all excited about it, but one gentleman in particular, I could tell he was just like, very interested. And he, his name is, have you met, do you know Carl Niemela? He's a guy who started Toolcraft in 1990, and been here for a very long time, obviously, a very successful machine shop. And he, um, I won't get it completely right, but he said, hey, I was one of these, those kids that really needed a skill center. He went to Monroe High School, uh, found out about some opportunities at Snow Isle, and attended there somewhere in the 80s, early 80s, I believe, and is a very successful businessman in town, and it was just, just what he needed at that time. So they were less interested in our properties and more interested in the potential of a skill center by the end of the meeting. So, so yes, so a lot of things are coming together, and a lot of interest in this community in that particular area focused in our strategic plan. So more to come on that. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, agenda item 7.01, we have board reports and/or comments.
Interactors.
Okay, I guess I'll go. So we have more student celebrations, it has been a while. We have three Snow Isle Tech Students of the Year this year, at Monroe, in Monroe in the school district. We have Jackson Sherman Dunn from Sky Valley Education Center that received Student of the Year for Construction Trades. Connor Cox from Monroe High School that received it for computers, servers, and networking. And also Haley De La Vern from Monroe High School, who received it in early childhood education. So huge congratulations to them, that's not an easy feat to do. We're very proud of you. Also, just wanted to give a shout out to our sports medicine team up at the high school that were the first, they took first place at the 19th Annual West Coast Sports Med Competition. Connor Daly, Quinn Good, Jaden Roan, Maya Paxton, and Ivor Griffiths. Congratulations to them, that's awesome. And also, special shout out to Amiko Spangler for being the speed taping champion. I might need to go get some lessons on how to do speed taping, since my son's in basketball. Also, at Sky Valley, we had two students who entered into the 2025 Ninth Circuit Civics Contest, When Duty Calls, Why Exercising the Rights of and Responsibilities of Citizenship is Important. And these two students took third place with the video that they put together. So I wanted to give a congratulations to Minden Siegel and James Miller at Sky Valley Education Center. Just well done. I'm always amazed at the things our students are capable of and what they accomplish. Also, I wanted to give a shout out to the Monroe FFA that did very well at the 95th Washington State FFA Convention and Expo. There were quite a few members from the team that placed there out of a lot of different teams. And then also, I was going to, let's see, go this way. We have, so Myron did our honorable mentions, but I wanted to make sure that we hit our second team and our first team all Wesco as well. So I wanted to give a congratulations to all of these second team all Wesco earners. It's a big feat to be named to this, it's something that all of the coaches get together and vote on. So for track and field, we have Vincent Tessandori, Seth Wood, Garrett Beltramo, Sophia Willett, Christina McPherson, Ava Davison, Ella Wayrich. And then for softball, we have Vivian Nucky, Izzy Webster, Addie Bryant, Tenny Oylier. Boys soccer, Carson Fields, Yoav Mendez. For girls golf, it's Siri Park and Brooke Odell. Congratulations to all of you. Also, for first team Wesco, for girls tennis, we have Jada Boomers, Tanisha Segren, Amiko Spangler, Emerson Hartway. Boys soccer is Julian Perez, Benji Vodigal, Connor Daly, Cody Duncan, Zach Pazier, Tristan Coe, Matthew Gunter, and Pedro Gaspar. Baseball, Caleb Campbell and A.J. Welch. And then track and field, Mason Davis, Michael Hummel, Carl Watson, Garrett Beltramo, and Ella Wayrich. Congratulations to every single one of you. And then we had state. We had, we had boys golf go to state, Jack Koontz. I had the privilege of being able to meet him at an event that I was at recently, that he was donating his time and helping out. He's an amazing young man. For girls golf, we had Siri Park. Girls tennis, Jada Boomers went to state. Boys tennis, we had Miles Baumchin and Jacob Schaefer. Girls, the whole girls softball team went to state yet again. So congratulations, girls. The boys soccer team also went to state, which was fabulous. And then we have our track and field that also went to state. But first, before state, we had Wesco North champs, Mason Davis in the 100 meter, Garrett Beltramo in shot put, Michael Hummel in the 400 meter, Ella Wayrich in the 400 meter, and Carl Watson in the 200 meter. And going to state for track and field, we had Mason Davis, Carl Watson, Ella Wayrich, Michael Hummel, Garrett Beltramo, Myron Robinson, congratulations, and Makai, Makaya? Makaya Thompson? So just congratulations to every single one of you, you continue, oh, you just continue to represent the school so well in everything that you do. And also, I wanted to give a shout out to our Unified Sports. They had two soccer games that happened, which soccer was added on this year, which was very exciting. It's incredible to watch, I wasn't able to make it in person, but I got to see the video of those, of one of those games, and it just brings a smile to your face. I'm so excited to see what we do with this next year, how it continues to grow, as with all of our sports that we offer here. We're also adding in, I believe, girls flag football? Yes, which is another really awesome thing for next year. So just looking forward to all the things, looking forward to graduation coming up, the celebration of all that these students have accomplished. It's truly an exciting time, and I just want to say congratulations to the parents as well. I know that it's not an easy feat to get your child to this point where they are graduating, as I'm sitting here staring it in the face in another four years, which is really hard to believe with my oldest. So congratulations to them, and also, just an encouragement to our teachers, as I go, teachers and staff, as I go around and ask students continually, who's your favorite staff member, who's made the biggest impact on your life? It ranges from lunchroom, front office, custodian, teacher, principal, it's, it's all over the place. Every single one of you are making a lives in the difference of students every single day that you show up, and they notice. So congratulations to all of you and the hard work that you've put in to also help get these seniors to where they are, and to be walking across the stage or receiving their diploma as we go into this weekend. It's truly an amazing time to be in the Monroe School District. We're doing awesome things, and I hope everybody has a fabulous summer.
It's 6:50 PM, the sun is still out, go have fun, and tonight's meeting is adjourned.